The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to another edition of I in Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hens, along with my guest co-host this evening, Myles McGuire from Oshkosh News Network. Tony has some obligations. He's actually in a play and in rehearsals and that kind of thing, so he couldn't be here tonight. Myles was kind enough to say that he'd fill in. So, Myles, nice to see you on this side of the table.
Glad to be here.
Yes, thank you very much for being able to do this. We are going to be discussing the city council issues tonight with three of the candidates running for Oshkosh Common Council. First, we're being joined by a newcomer to the local political scene, Mary Meist is here. And welcome to the show. Thanks very much for taking time out of your schedule to come down here and chat with us.
Well, thank you for having me.
Why don't we start out by you telling us a little bit about who Mary Meist is and why you're running for Oshkosh Common Council?
Well, I am originally from Fond du Lac. I grew up there and I graduated from there from Gridrich High School. I then went to the University of Minnesota in the Twin Cities, and I graduated with a degree in political science. And then shortly thereafter, I did some political work up there, and then I moved back to the area, and I now work for Myles Kimball in their order processing department.
Okay, very good.
And I decided to run for common council because I saw this need for a change from the way things were going. I was not happy with some of the things that were happening, and I just wanted to do it. I thought it was the right time.
Well, let's start there. What kinds of things weren't you happy with?
Oh, well, Five Rivers, for one. The garbage fee, I was not happy with. And just the way that the budget turned out, I was not happy with that either.
So when you say you're not happy with, say, Five Rivers, what is it about Five Rivers that you're not happy with?
Well, I'm not a big supporter of TIFs, any tax incremental financing from the first place. I think that we, as a city, have to start looking into other types of tools to get businesses off the ground, such as the business incubator.
So it's more the funding mechanism than the private, per se?
Yeah. I mean, I just don't like the idea that it's a 20-year property tax investment for the city. I think that's too long.
Or longer.
Or longer, yeah.
Do you ever see a time, Mary, in which TIFs would be acceptable in your mind?
You know, if it's used properly, if a TIP is used, if the land is really, truly blighted, and as long as it follows the Wisconsin state statutes, then I would support a TIP. But right now, I haven't been seeing that very much in this area.
Well, let me ask you this. I mean, we've been hearing a lot about Five Rivers for over a year already, and most recently, in the last few weeks, they were supposed to have some financing arrangements presented to the council by, you know, a few weeks ago. That didn't happen. Some council candidates are saying, maybe it's time to pull the plug. Where do you stand on that?
I agree with council candidates. Let's pull the plug on it. If they can't get their act together, then, yeah.
Then what do you do with the site?
No, I haven't thought about that, what we can do with it. I mean, I think that that site can be utilized in some way, shape, or form. I would have to look into it a little bit more to see what we can do, what that area and that land could be used for, good purpose.
Garbage fees, everybody's favorite topic these days. Obviously, you don't like the fees. Most of us don't. If Mary Meist were to get elected to the council, would you be in favor of repealing those fees?
I would be open to repealing those fees. One thing that I'd like to see, especially with the budget, is if we start streamlining some of the processes that we have within our city government. And what I mean by that is, taking these processes, looking at them and say, okay, how can we make this more efficient? Where can we save time? Where can we save money? And then taking that and then applying it to something like the garbage fee, so that we won't have that again.
Do you have, for instance, I mean, can you name a process that we could fix that way?
No specific process. I've been thinking about this a lot. But, you know, it could be something as simple as changing the type of paper that we use. Something, I know one woman saved $100,000 for her work by switching the paper over. I mean, that's $100,000. That's 1/6 of our garbage fee. But, you know, it's like little incremental changes like that will bring it into perspective.
And when you say paper, you're talking about things like copy machine paper and things like that?
Copy machine paper, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, one of the biggest things that we've heard about in the last couple of weeks, besides Five Rivers and garbage fees, is unpaid taxes. And along with those unpaid taxes, of course, there are four properties that we know of anyway in the city that also hold liquor licenses. Now, one of those is tied up in bankruptcy, and the liquor license is tied up with that bankruptcy proceeding. The others aren't bankrupt. They're not in bankruptcy court. But they're sitting there with liquor licenses, and we've got a city ordinance that very clearly says, you have unpaid taxes, you don't get a liquor license. What should be done with the licenses that are already out there to these folks?
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily, well, let me backtrack a second. Here, Northwestern posed this question to me last night as well, about if the common council should have more easier ability to seize liquor licenses from people and businesses and establishments that are delinquent on their property taxes. And it kind of struck me as not the best way, because taking away that liquor license may not, it may disable that restaurant or that establishment, to the point where they won't be able to pay their taxes, or it'll take them a lot longer to create that revenue. I think right now, the city does have some measures in place, such as license renewal, which happens every two years. So at that time, I think that the city would be able to say, hey, you haven't paid your taxes. We're not going to renew your license.
So should we, are you advocating then changing the city ordinance that says that the license shall not be issued if they've got unpaid taxes?
Well, that's what the city ordinance is right now.
Right. So should we change that then, so that they can still have the license?
I would say not at this time.
Okay, okay, all right.
So it's a matter of better enforcement of the existing law?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
That's fine.
Oh, okay.
I was just trying to find that, that's all.
All right. Now, do you support the current council decision of not putting the troop withdrawal referendum on the ballot? That was a hot issue for months.
Yes. Well, I do volunteer with Winnebago Peace and Justice Center, and I was one of those people that went out and got signatures to put this item on the ballot. I don't support it, only because I think that there were two ways that we could have put it on the ballot. One was with the signatures, which we did fall short with. And it was unfortunate, and we do take the fall for that. We do understand that we did fail. But the other way was to have a council member present it to the common council to put it on the referendum, which Councilman Esslinger did do. Unfortunately, all the rhetoric that we heard that night was because we did not have the amount of signatures. And it's very unfortunate. I would have put it back up, because I would have put it on the ballot.
Okay. But you're comfortable then with the council's decision that they made, and that was to not put it on?
Well, as comfortable as you can be after, you know, spending all that work to try and get it on. But I accept it. I mean, I was obviously disappointed, but I do accept it.
Sure, sure.
If there was one issue that you think voters should focus on, because, you know, it's hard to keep track of all these things, what would be the issue that you would want voters to focus on, and what would be your position on that?
Poverty and homelessness here in Oshkosh, especially with transitional housing. I think that, well, right now, we only have, really, we only have one place right now for transitional housing, and that's with Advocat. It's one family unit. And I think right now, we can really expand on that.
And what should the city's role be in that?
I think the city can advocate for more, look for other options, expand the options, look at father cars. Right now, it's an emergency shelter. I think he has great potential to become a transitional housing shelter.
Okay. Smoking ban. I mean, we heard a lot about this during the last election two years ago. And, you know, there's always the possibility of something even more stringent coming back.
Sure.
We've already heard rumblings about a total workplace ban on smoking. How do you feel about something like that?
I agree with it. I work at Myles Kimball, and we are a smoke-free environment. And I agree with the smoking ban. I think it's good for public health.
What would you do, though, in a case, Mary, of, I mean, we have a lot of people these days who work from home. They may have no employees. It may just be themselves. But nonetheless, it's a workplace. What kind of provisions would you envision making in an ordinance like that to allow people, whether they work by themselves or they have another employee in their home, to, you know, be able to smoke in their own home office if they wanted?
Well, I think it would depend on the number of employees that they have, whether or not they have, what type of business they do, whether they bring people into their homes, like as clients. I think that would definitely add some factors into that type of ordinance.
Okay.
With contract negotiations coming up for city workers, have you thought about that, and where the city should be heading on that?
Yeah, I have thought about it.
Okay. Where should the city be heading?
Well, I think as long as the city is fair, and they're not treating the non-union workers different than the union workers, as long as we keep it fair and balanced with these contract negotiations, I think that's where the city should head.
Okay, great. Why don't you take about 30 seconds, look into camera three, Mary, and tell folks why they should vote for you on Tuesday, February 21st?
Sure. Well, you should vote for me, because I am a determined young individual. I am not afraid to ask the tough questions and decisive questions as well. I'm not interested in the special interest groups. I am more interested in doing what is right for the city. So please vote for me on February 21st and April 4th.
There you go. All right, very good. Thanks so much. Good luck, too.
Thank you.
We're going to take a short break. When we come back, we'll be joined by the incumbent running for city council, one of them anyway, Paul Esslinger. We'll be right back. And we are now joined by Paul Esslinger. Paul is seeking his, is this your third term that you're seeking, or fourth?
Fourth.
Fourth term. Seems like it hasn't been...
I'm an old guy, old man, you know, whatever you want to call it.
All right. So you've been on the council now for three terms, looking for your fourth two-year term. I think pretty much folks in the community know who you are. Why don't you tell folks why you want to have another term, another crack at this?
Right. Well, I think the main reason I want to run again is because I think we have special interest groups that are, in my opinion, running the city. And I think other people have disagreed with me on that, and that's fine. But I think the fact of the matter is, in our last election, Mayor Castle spent $12,500, had several people giving him money. Brian Bain, Meredith Shireman, spending $5,000, $6,000, taking money from special interest groups and special interest people. In my opinion, it's evident from the votes that are being taken that those people's needs are being met. And in my opinion, I think the taxpayers are out to dry right now. And I would like to continue fighting and asking some questions and keeping people accountable.
Well, you mentioned Brian Bain and Meredith Shireman. You know, how are the people who donated to their campaigns in particular, since they're the two newbies on the council? How have those people's needs been met by them being on the council and the contributions that were made to them?
Right. Well, number one, I know Meredith Shireman has accepted money from Ben Ganther, both personally and through a political action committee, which he's involved with.
Progress Oshkosh?
Progress Oshkosh. Well, actually, I think Forward Oshkosh is the one that donates the money. Progress Oshkosh is the one that reviews the candidates. I don't know, whatever. But, you know, and obviously, Mr. Ganther is a developer in the city, and things get voted on. And, you know, on the 100 block, there was many questions that I raised, and I think at that time, Melanie Blackwell's on the council were raised. And of course, Meredith was not on the council at that time. But my concern is, when you're taking money from these folks, I think there's an implied response of, you know, I want things done the way, Mr. Ganther doesn't live in the city. Why would he be giving money to people? He didn't give me any money. I've known Mr. Ganther. I've talked to him on several occasions. And personally, I like the man. I mean, he's nice to me. But he didn't give me any money. So I'm, you know, I'm to assume, maybe I'm assuming too much, but I'm assuming he wants votes to be affirmative for him.
When you say special interest groups, plural, are there groups out there, or are you talking primarily about Forward Oshkosh?
Forward Oshkosh, Progress Oshkosh, the Chamber of Commerce. You could even argue the labor unions have candidate, not forums, but they interview candidates. The Tavern League, which I've been supported by, the firefighters, a special interest group. They run as a pack, so you could probably consider those as special interest groups, which I've been, I've been supported by them. My argument for, you know, if you call the firefighters a special interest group, I'm proud to be associated, not only associated, but endorsed by them, because they're charged as to save lives. You know, they're charged as to build buildings and make money, you know, to line their pockets. They're charged as to save lives. And if they're supporting me because they feel that I'm a good council candidate for that, I'm proud to say that.
Well, now, you know, talking about Mr. Ganther, you know, he's been making a lot of news lately, in large part because of something that I uncovered, sort of. And that is his unpaid taxes that he and his partners have on the building down in the 100 block of North Main Street. That building also has been issued or holds, I don't know, there's all terminologies for this thing, Paul. I can't really understand it. There's been a liquor license that is...
Being held.
...being held in reserve or in pocket for Mr. Ganther. And yet, there's a city ordinance that says, if you've got unpaid taxes, then you can't get a liquor license. Nor can a liquor license be issued to a property that has unpaid taxes. So, you know, so what should be done about that? And the second part of that question is then, you know, do you feel that people like Meredith Shireman should be voting on whether or not to revoke that license, or to not issue it, or whatever it is that you guys have to do?
Right. Well, to answer the first question, what should be done? He shouldn't get his liquor license. I mean, it's clearly in the ordinance that if you or partners or whatever have not paid their taxes on the premises that you own, you don't get the liquor license. That's cut and dry. So until Mr. Ganther comes forward and pays his taxes, he shouldn't get it. Which I feel sorry for the folks that want to open up the cranky pads with pizza place. I feel sorry for them, because they're kind of the pawns in this. I mean, they don't have to pay their taxes. They just pay rent to him. So I'd like to see them go in there. To answer your second question, I don't think Meredith Shireman, or quite frankly, Frank Tower, who's accepted money from Mr. Ganther in the past, I don't think they should be voting if this comes up to the council, whether to accept or deny. I don't think they should be voting on it, because they've accepted money straight from Mr. Ganther. And I think that's a conflict of interest.
But then, by the same token, the argument could be made, okay, Mr. Esslinger, you've accepted money from the firefighters by way of financial contribution and their endorsement. Should you then vote, or have to abstain from voting, on things that have to do with fire trucks, or even maybe that portion of the budget?
The answer would be no, because the firefighters act as a group. There's not one person that's on the fire department looking for it. Now, if there was a member of the fire department that was a developer, and it's John Doe, John Doe gave me $100, and John Doe wants to build something in Oshkosh, I would recuse myself from that. But Mr. Ganther, again, is a person that makes money. The firefighters, I mean, they might make money, obviously, from the taxpayers. They get a salary. But it's a completely separate issue.
Well, it's a separate issue, but aren't the firefighters, because they are city employees, they do have a stake in the budget, as well as in the upcoming contract negotiations?
Sure they do. But again, I think, you know, when the firefighters talked to me, when they first contacted me, they said, all we're looking for is someone to listen to us and to weigh our concerns. And that, to me, sounds fair. They're not saying, we want you to agree with everything that we talk about. I mean, that's just simply not going to happen. So again, they're looking at saving people's lives, making sure that their own lives are safe when they go into a burning building, or the fire, or the police department. You know, they want equipment. They want vests, or whatever the case may be. And, you know, when it comes to budgets, I very seldom question the chief of police or the fire chief, because I don't, you know, although I'm responsible for their budgets, passing them, when it comes down to issues of safety, I don't feel I have the expertise and the knowledge that those individuals do. And that's one of the reasons I want to have an organizational analysis done in the city, because I want professional people coming in here looking at our departments.
Tell us more about that. I mean, how big of a program is this going to be? How much is it going to cost, do you think?
Yeah. There's a, I have contacted one group out of Milwaukee. I'm working with Dr. Simmons from the university. He's going to give me some other names of individuals and businesses that do this. From what I was told with the group in Milwaukee, if you want an analysis done of, and it's usually the fire or police department, because it's the biggest budget, to completely dismantle that and go from head to toe, find out what people are making in Oshkosh and populations similar to Oshkosh, and scrubbing it down, you're looking at $50,000 per department. But they also do kind of a condensed consolidated version, where they'll look at all of the departments in the city and do kind of a, on the surface, here's what we think, we need to do more analysis. And to do something like that is about $20,000. But I think that's money well spent, because one of the flaws in the form of government that we have is you have seven people, and no disrespect to myself or any one of those people, but they're simply not experts. They're not lawyers. They're not engineers. They're not fire chiefs. They're not police chiefs. So we have to take this direction from the city staff. And I think it's high time that we get someone in there, independent from the City of Oshkosh, to say, hey, here's what we think. We're professionals in this. Here's the information, city council. You do with it what you want.
Okay. You're also a part-time employee, so there's only so much that you can do with, you know, being a part-time employee.
Absolutely.
Five Rivers Resort has certainly been at the top of everybody's list in the last year or so, especially in the last few weeks and months. Now, they failed to present financing options, alternatives, if you will, to the council when they were supposed to in January. January 16th, I guess, was the date that had been set for that to be done. Some candidates are saying it's time to pull the plug. Where does Paul Esslinger stand on Five Rivers Resort right now?
Well, I'm very concerned. We have, we're taping this on February 2nd. We have an executive session with Mr. Kinney on the 14th, after our regular council meeting. He's going to be talking to us, I believe, about financing mechanisms that Mr. Doye, the developer, has come forward with. So until I see that, I don't want to make a final determination. All I can say is, in my opinion, although I guess we don't have a contract, so to speak, with him, he's not lived up to his end of the deal so far. And, you know, we're looking at a $16 million basically donation to him. And if he's at square one and faltering, then I've got some serious concerns.
I want to address one thing, and maybe you can answer this for me, Paul. You know, in speaking with Mr. Doye myself, he has indicated to me that there were certain things that he wanted to bring forward to the public, because he understands he needs a certain amount of public buy-in in order to make this project fly and be successful. But he has said that Jackson Kinney, our director of community development, has sort of prevented him from saying certain things. Do you know why that would be? I mean, if a developer is comfortable enough to say something, why would Mr. Kinney not want him to?
Yeah, and you're correct. I actually talked to Mr. Kinney about that. And when I talked to him, that's when the negotiations were still going on. And Mr. Kinney said, I don't want, while negotiations are going on, I don't want Mr. Doye talking about what we're negotiating. And I agree. I think that's inappropriate at that time. But the negotiating now is done. And so if Mr. Kinney is still saying, and I haven't talked to him about this in a while, but if he's still saying that Mr. Doye should not come to the public and say, here's all my plans, I don't understand that.
He's also talking to the bankers that Mr. Doye is dealing with. And do you, Paul Esslinger, have a concern about that?
Yes, I do. Mr. Doye, or Mr. Kinney does not work for Mr. Doye. Mr. Kinney draws his pay from the taxpayers and needs to, I think, separate himself from trying to go out and get financing for Mr. Doye. That's Mr. Doye's responsibility in his group.
Okay.
Garbage fees. Let's hear it, Paul.
Yeah. I guess the long and short of that is, I supported it because I said, it's better than what we have. I think it's the worst of two evils. When you look at...
How is it better?
Okay, yeah. When you look at it, there's two criteria that I looked at. Number one is you pay it currently through your taxes. So I know Myles is a rich guy. He's got a $300,000 home.
Really?
And now, he has to pay his taxes on $300,000. If I have a $100,000 home, he pays three times the amount in sanitation fees than I do. And he would probably argue, hey, I don't generate, I probably generate less garbage than you do. So there's an inequity automatically. The second criteria is that businesses within the City of Oshkosh are paying property taxes. And they are not even allowed the service. So we're charging someone that we don't even allow to use the service. So if everyone is charged a $10 fee, is it the best scenario? No, it's not. I think it should be a volume-based. If you generate one bag, you pay whatever. But that may create more bureaucracy.
Okay. Paul, real quickly, just tell people in about 15 seconds why they should vote for you.
Okay. Well, first of all, it's been a pleasure serving you for coming up on six years, running again for another two-year term. I know that you have an agree with everything that I've done, but I hope that I've proven that I respect the taxpayers and I'm out fighting for them. So I would ask that you vote for Paul Esslinger April 4th if I pass the primary. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thanks, Paul.
You bet.
We're going to take a short break. When we come back, we'll be joined by Mark Madison. We'll be right back.
Have a nice day.
You, too.
Thanks.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back, and we're joined now by Mark Madison. This is Mark's first run for city council, although he did run for mayor last spring in the springtime election there. So, welcome, and you've also served on the county board for how-
Three terms, six years, yes.
Okay. Well, for anyone who doesn't know who you are, Mark, why don't we start by you telling folks a little bit about who you are, and why you're seeking a term on the common council?
Thank you. My name is Mark Madison, I-
Just go ahead and keep talking.
My name is Mark Madison. I'm running for city council. I live in Oshkosh. I've lived here since 1988. Always been a Wisconsin resident. Been interested in politics most of my adult life, starting in the 60s, way back then. And I did have the opportunity in '98 to be appointed to the county board of supervisors, and I was on the Parkview Committee, and was there for three terms at the county board. And last year, the first year since I've been here, that there was an opportunity for someone, other than a councilperson, to be elected mayor, I did decide, kind of for the interest of it all, and the experience, to run for mayor. So, I tried that as well. I have two daughters, who are products of the Oshkosh Schools, successful products. And I thank the Oshkosh Schools for their assistance. They both are college graduates now. I work as a social worker for a living. I've been doing that for a long time, working with children and families. I worked in the county level, I worked in the school district, and now I'm working for the state.
Okay. So, one of the big issues facing the Oshkosh Common Council is going to be a multi-multi-million dollar development called Five Rivers Resort.
Yes.
These folks were to, as of January 16th, present some financing to the common council. That didn't happen. Some candidates are saying it's time to pull the plug. How do you feel about Five Rivers, and what do you think should be done about making sure that these folks kind of stay on track here?
Well, I think there's been checks and balances and meetings, as far as that deadline. It's unfortunate that everything hasn't started and moved even sooner. I mean, you know, we always shoot for ideals. I guess I'm idealistic, but I realize that things don't always work ideally either. I think that deadline was more of an arbitrary, let's kind of set a goal for ourselves, and unfortunately, it didn't work. But I'm still hopeful that it will work out. I sure don't think it's time to pull the plug. I think there's more time there, and I think the city's aware of it, and I hope they get their funding that they need. I don't think we're going to go through with it if that funding doesn't occur. I'm hoping that it will. I think it'd be an advantage and a healthy project for Oshkosh.
So, would you then be supportive of them not even being able to break ground until they have every part of their financing locked up and in place?
Well, I'm assuming that's how it's being approached, but yes, I'd be in favor of no groundbreaking until they got their financing, and I hope that's the plan.
Okay. Garbage fees.
Garbage fees.
Why don't you feel one?
A bunch of garbage.
Tell us about your thoughts about garbage fees, or your feelings about garbage fees.
Well, how can you feel happy or pleased with garbage fees? They're most unfortunate. I'm not sure if they're necessarily evil. The alternatives I heard about didn't sound too delightful either. You know, I'm not pleased with the state's role in it all. I think we have garbage fees because of the state budget. We don't just want to lay the blame all on our counselors, that's for sure. This is finally the third year coming up of the three-year budget crisis at the state that they imposed that levy limit on the city this past year, as well as the decreased shared revenue, and that's what put us in this pickle. Is it ideal? I don't know. I guess the best I could say is, I'd sure like to see every avenue explored for alternatives to the garbage fee.
What are some of those alternatives? I mean, what do you think we can do?
Well, I wish I had, you know, there was the notion, some talked about bonding, but that's just extending more credit for something, so I don't know that's too great. There were some cuts here and there, I guess, proposed. There were three people of the council members opposed to the garbage fee, and then four favored it. Somebody, I know one of the things to be cut was crossing guards as an alternative. That was a hundred thousand dollar item. That, too, doesn't sound like something you really want to embrace, to not see crossing guards. You know, I don't have the exact plan. I'd like to be a part of a coalition, say, on the next, after the election, if I was elected, to look at more alternatives. I like to hear citizens, maybe there's citizens out there that have ideas, too, and come forward. I do think if we're looking at more cuts, I'd like to see the department heads be responsible for that. I don't really think it's the job necessarily, nor does the council member themselves has the expertise to say, "This department, that department," should cut something, but perhaps giving that responsibility to our department heads, and opening it up to citizens as well. I mean, not just to criticize, of course, we have that opportunity in the council meetings now, but if somebody has a healthy notion as to how to find an alternative.
But do you think a department head is actually going to say, "Hey, I've got an extra twenty thousand dollars in my budget?"
Of course not. And I'm not sure how bloated they actually are in the first place. But I'm saying, if we agreed as a council and citizens, that just trimming all that money from budgets is the way to go, the cuts, then we could come up with a percentage that would get us balanced, and put that to. I can't say I really appreciate that alternative either. I really don't think our departments are overly staffed, and I think we'd all feel and notice a reduction in services in our city if we went that way.
One of the things that we've been hearing a lot about in the last couple of weeks is unpaid property taxes on commercial properties, as well as residential properties. And some of these commercial properties also have liquor licenses attached to them, which is in direct violation of city ordinance. What do you think should be done with those liquor licenses on those unpaid property tax properties?
Going to make one last comment on the last question before I go forward.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I thought one thing that would be wonderful is some of the philanthropic exercises we've seen, money donated to the Leech Amphitheater and our water park. You know, if somebody wanted to donate some money to the city budget crisis, that would be welcome, and a nice tax write-off.
Okay.
As far as the liquor licenses and the property taxes, boy, that's something, too, that kind of gets the hair up on the back of your neck, isn't it? At least, I pay my property taxes, and to read about somebody that doesn't, it just makes you feel like they're not paying their fair share, and you want to, I don't know, I want to palm the table and say, "What's going on here?", kind of a thing. But once you settle down, I mean, I think there are a lot of checks and balances in place. As I understand it, for one thing, existing licensed owners who are not using their license are coming in front of the city council on the next meeting, the 14th. Now, that's just to kind of say, "How come you're not using it, and what's that all about?" But then, if they're not paying their taxes, such as, I believe it's the Howard Johnson's property, who's in arrears of their taxes, they have a granted license, but it's not been issued. And so, when that year is up, that they haven't paid their taxes, they will not have the license. So, there is a process in place, in my understanding, as well as, if the city council wants to actually pull the license, then there is a specifically dictated state hearing. And so, that's a real opportunity, if they want to go that far, too. And I think you have to look at all those things.
Are you in favor of pulling licenses?
If the situation is correct. But what's the situation? You know, you don't want to cut your nose off despite your face. Now, the other situation on Main Street there, that license isn't even being used, but there supposedly is a business that's going to be developed there shortly. And you'd hate to pull a license right before a tax-paying business comes into play. So, you know, you've got to weigh the pros and the cons, like any situation.
Well, sure. So, should we do away with the ordinance, then, that says that no liquor license can be issued to a property or person in tax arrears?
No. We shouldn't do away with that.
Okay. So, I'm confused, because-
Are you saying that we should go forward with the license at 100 North Main, even if the taxes are unpaid?
Well, no, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay.
I'm not saying that at all. I apologize if I was unclear. But right now, the timeframe hasn't elapsed. If we want to take their license that's not even being used, that would call for a hearing. And the council would have to have a specific hearing, a regular judicial process, to take that license away, to my understanding.
Okay. The common council, about a month or so ago, made a decision to not put a troop withdrawal referendum on the ballot. That was a very controversial issue. People pretty much evenly split, or were close to evenly split. How does Mark Madison feel about whether or not such a referendum question should be on the ballot?
I like the idea of referendums, and I like the idea of people having discussions about issues. I think that's healthy, and I think that's the way our society is going to be the healthiest and most productive. So, the fact that there was discussions from both sides of the issue, I think, was great. Even though the referendum didn't occur, there was lots of healthy discussions. You know, I disagree with people that said it wasn't a local issue. I hope those people will continue to think and perhaps have an open mind, because there are people with loved ones there, who are all paying extensive amount of money, speaking of budgetary concerns, for the war. So, to have a discussion, I think, is healthy. I personally would like to have seen the referendum, even though it was only advisory. On the other hand, I think the referendum was based on those numbers of petition signers, twenty-eight, eighty, I believe it was, twenty-one, eighty, and they just weren't there. So, I think the right decision was made, rather than cutting them a specific reduction in number.
Okay. Do you have a real quick question for Mark?
No, but I'll ask him. He'll give us a quick answer.
Okay.
Contract negotiations with the city upcoming. What do you think this, with the union workers? You're a union member. Do you have a sense of where the city should be headed on that?
I really don't. I mean, we have a budget crisis, so I'm presuming it's going to be only so much to offer. I really don't see myself commenting on it, but I hope it's all fair and even and considerate for the city's predicament, and the workers.
Another real quick question. There is some talk about a possible smoking ban, total workplace smoking ban. How does Mark Madison feel about that?
I like smoking bans. That's where I'm at on that. I still think, in the long run, businesses who do not have smoking will gain in the long run. I'm not a smoker, and a lot of people are not smokers. You go into a business that does have smoking, and you all end up smelling like smoking. So, I think in the long run, it's a health issue, and I think it's a valuable thing to have.
Okay. Take about thirty seconds, if you would, Mark. Look into camera three, and tell folks why they should vote for you on February 21st.
Thank you. Please vote for me on February 21st. Candidate for the school board. I think I am a thoughtful individual. I've been aware and following city politics. I've been involved in government, I'm interested in government, and the common good of the citizens of Oshkosh. I think I will do the best job for looking out after your tax dollar, and appreciate your considerations and participation in local government. Thank you.
All right, very good, and thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you being here. Just hang on one second.
Yep.
We're going to take a short break. When we come back, Miles and I will kind of do a wrap-up. We'll be right back.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in forced labor camps.
If I stay in Kewaunaw, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about fourteen years old.
I was twenty.
I was twenty-four.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-4-A-CHILD. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
And welcome back to the final segment here of ION Oshkosh. We've just talked with and met three candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council. Of course, there are nine people seeking three positions on the common council. Two of the nine are incumbents. They are Paul Esslinger, who we just met a few minutes ago, and Burke Tower, who will be interviewed on an upcoming show. Miles, what do you think about the candidates that we have interviewed so far? Not just on this show, but, you know, on others, and I know you've been interviewing them as well.
Right. Well, I think one of the interesting issues is the whole issue of incumbency, and whether, you know, there are people in the city who are not happy. They're not happy with garbage fees, they're not happy with Five Rivers, they're not happy with taxes not being paid. And I think that's going to be a tough thing for the incumbents to say, "Well, you know, we were on the council for the last two years, and this is how we got there, but reelect us because..." Fill in the blank.
Yeah.
At the same time, I think the challengers are going to have to come forward with really clear explanations about how they would have done things differently, or if they wouldn't do things differently, why. And I think that's still to be seen.
Well, and I think one of the biggest frustrations for all of us with this garbage tax thing, and I know I've heard it from some folks, is if you repeal the garbage tax fee, then where do you make up the difference in the budget? And that is a tough question. And I get personally so frustrated with these different budgets. You've got a capital improvements budget, and you've got your general operating budget. And, you know, if you shift some things from one budget into another budget, you've got a whole bunch of money. And yet, you know, we're now charging people, starting in October, to pick up their trash, because that's a problem with one budget. But over here, we've got the other budget that we can find almost three hundred dollars for floating docks. It's maddening, and it just seems to me like it's this shell game of hide the money, and, you know, it's all the taxpayers' money.
Right. At the budget hearing, or the budget, the council session where the budget was passed, you may recall that Burke Tower proposed this idea, "Well, let's go back to the city staff, that's what we're paying them to do, and, okay, we're short a couple hundred thousand dollars, you tell us where you can find a couple hundred thousand dollars." And I think at some point, that's what's got to be done. I mean, it may be that there isn't two hundred thousand dollars there, but somebody's got to scrub the budget a little bit. And we heard Paul Esslinger say here, and I think it's true, that you've got part-time council members who are not experts, they're not experts in development, they're not experts in public safety, they're not experts in public works, and they're sort of having to make these judgments, "Well, you know, you don't really need that, or you really don't need that." And that's a tough call for a part-timer to make. So I think it's, in some way, whether it's bringing in a consultant, or whether it is simply going back to the staff and saying, "You need to justify this more," some of that information has to come to the surface. And maybe it's true that the budget is as lean as it could possibly be. I would be surprised if that's the case, but, you know, I'm open to that possibility. But I think that there are sort of mechanisms that have to be put in place that don't exist right now.
Sure. The Five Rivers Resort, of course, is going to be a massive issue for anyone who gets on this council. And, you know, we've seen several candidates say, "Yeah, it's probably time to pull it." And it seems to be the newer candidates, not the incumbents, although, you know, we've only got two incumbents who are seeking reelection.
Right.
And I think Paul is more sort of in the area of, "Hey, you know, if they can't come up with it, then maybe it's time." And he has some real concerns about it. I think everybody has some concerns. I just don't know to what degree some of the concerns really are.
Right. And the other question is, what are the alternatives? You've got this big, open plot of land, and if you look across the river, you've got open plots of land, and you've got the Pioneer that is semi-demolished. And at some point, you've got to do something. Real estate development is, you know, under the best of circumstances, is a messy process. It just is. And so there's always a little bit of back and forth and some leeway, but there's also a point at which you have to say, "You know, maybe this plan isn't going to work. Maybe there's a different way that we need to approach this. Maybe we need to take one of these empty plots and do something else with it, either on a temporary basis or a more permanent basis, and have a success there." And I'm afraid that we don't have a success with Park Plaza Hotel. We don't have a success with 100 North Main. And quite honestly, I think if you're an outside banker or developer, and you're looking at Oshkosh as a market, you're going to say, "Well, why would I go to square three here when square one and square two aren't working yet?".
Well, and, you know, that has been my frustration. I'm not running for council this time around, but that's been my frustration with the millions and millions of dollars that have been plunked into downtown redevelopment. I'm all for redevelopment if we're going to see some good from it, but we seem to be regressing here. You know, now we've got the 100 block that they're behind in their taxes, and Ben Ganther admits that it hasn't turned out the way he intended it to. And kitty-corner from that, one of the anchors of downtown and adjacent to the convention center is Park Plaza Hotel, sitting in bankruptcy. So we've got these massive properties that have failed or not lived up to what we were told they were going to be.
I'm originally from Baltimore, and Baltimore is one of those urban planning success stories, where the whole inner harbor was all falling apart, and it's been redeveloped, and, you know, it's on the cover of Time Magazine and things like that. But that was a very long process, and it was a very phased process, because you were going from land that was primarily industrial usage, you know, ocean-going ships going in, the water was polluted, there were tugboats and barges and all kinds of stuff. And the city took a very long time to turn things around, but one of the things that they did was build some infrastructure that was used primarily for recreation, just to get people thinking about the place differently, and so they would come down. And then, once the developers could say, "Hey, there is traffic, there are people coming down here," then, step by step by step. But just in this past week, they've announced that they're now finally filling in the last piece of the puzzle, but that's, you know, 25, 30-year process. And I think there's, in some ways, we've got too many things going without any one of them quite working right.
Well, and I think you're right. When you try to have too many irons in the fire, it's difficult to really do any one of them as expertly as you probably could. You know, focus on one or two things and do them right, otherwise, they're really not worth doing, probably.
Yeah, because I do think you undercut your new projects as you come along if the older ones aren't functioning properly.
Yeah. The smoking ban, I brought that up with some of the candidates, because we have, in the last, oh, probably month or so, heard a little bit more in the way of rumblings about a total workplace smoking ban, although we'd been asked that question during the candidates' forums last year, too. And, you know, I don't personally have a problem with a total workplace smoking ban, but I do have some concerns about when your workplace is in your home. And, you know, the workplace ban up in Appleton is so stringent that according to those, you know, if you follow that to the letter of the law, you can't even burn candles there. And that just seems a little unrealistic, and so I hope that as these candidates are saying, "Yeah, it's a health issue, and I'm all in favor of it," they're thinking in terms of, "Okay, but we're going to have to make some kind of exceptions here for people who work from home."
And I think there are a lot of exceptions like that that apply to small businesses. You can set some kind of employment captain, say, captain, say, if you're below four, five, or 10, or whatever, then you have a little more leeway.
You know, we didn't have a chance to talk to these council members tonight about the fishing pier, but I know that was just a huge, huge issue, and we'll have a chance to ask other candidates about that. But, I mean, overall, what do you think about the candidates that we've seen so far?
Well, I think that we're certainly seeing a lot of energy and enthusiasm, which are good things. What I think we're a little short on is the specific approach that they want to take. I mean, I think, you know, a lot of us are unhappy with, you know, as we said before, X, Y, Z, but how do you solve that? And how do you solve that particularly as a part-timer? I mean, are there ways to do this? And I think that there are ways. If the members of the council want to exert more control over the functioning of city government, I think they can. I'm not sure that they want to, and I'm not sure that the citizenry necessarily wants that either.
Sure.
I mean, we have a professional staff, and to some degree, you pay them to be professionals. But then, you just also have to question, what should be the proper role of the council? Where do they get involved? How much do they pull back on the reins?
I was happy to hear Mary Meist say that she is not in favor of all these TIF districts, and yet she feels that they're good and should be used when necessary, and those are the same kinds of things that Mike Donkey and Kent Monti and even Paul, I think, have said. But, you know, to just willy-nilly be offering up TIFs, it just seems ridiculous, and especially when, you know, a lot of this land is on the river. I mean, granted, some of it's going to have to be remediated because of contamination or whatever, but some of it may not need to be. And I just don't know that this property along the river really meets what the state intended as a definition for, you know, what's blighted.
Yeah, I honestly don't know all of the ins and outs of the history of the TIF law in Wisconsin.
Tony does.
Yeah.
He should be here to tell us.
He could tell you all of that stuff. But I think it is a, there are limits to the development tools that cities have, but just because you have a tool doesn't mean that you should use it over and over and over again. And, again, I just don't think that there are mechanisms in place. We have a redevelopment authority, but I don't think that they are in the habit of saying, "No." I think they're in the habit of saying, "Yes." And I think that's true of a lot of the citizen advisory boards we have. I mean, you talk about the fishing pier. Well, that went through, you know, the Parks Advisory Board, and they said, "Yes." It's just nobody knew about it until it was pretty much a done deal.
Right. And we're almost out of time, but, you know, on the subject of redevelopment authority, while that may be a good thing, it's a scary thing, because these people are sitting on a board, if you will, they've been appointed to that position, and they have the ability to endet this community for millions of dollars, and they're not answerable or accountable in any shape, form, or fashion to the public, because they're not elected.
And that's supposed to be at the council level, but there's sort of this...
There's something that, there's a disconnect there in some way.
Yes.
But anyway, well, thank you, Miles, for guest hosting and pinch hitting tonight. Thanks to all of our guests, and also thanks to you for joining us and allowing us into your homes for the last hour. We'll see you next time. Don't forget to go to the polls on Tuesday, February 21st. And until we meet again, keep your eye on us. We've got our right on Oshkosh.